All right, welcome everyone. With this time, it's my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Wright for our program this evening.
Here we have the Award of Excellence coming in first place. And so, come back here. I hope everybody can see. So, everybody, in the first one, right here. And then the second line. Am I reading that part?
Yes.
And then the second line. Okay, you're beginning the second line. Okay, so you guys need to step, take two steps forward. One, two. One more. Okay, the second line, you go behind and you stand behind me. Does that work?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out for the Shawnee Mission Area Council Celebration of the District Award Winning Writers. This is the Citizenship Writing Contest, and it's been going on for years. And this year, the theme is within, it starts with me. I was gonna say the Reflections theme, that's Within Reach. It starts with me. So, all of these students up here, these award-winning writers, gave entries from our entire district, from 5th grade through 12th grade. And the first row is the Award of Excellence, which is first place. And the second row is Award of Merit, which is second place. So, we are going to start awarding. Lori? No. So, the very first award that we have is to Matthew Burns. He's from Brookwood, and it's a 5th grade poem. The next one? Let's give our cheers at the end if you don't mind. Unless you just can't resist a hoot for your family. Okay, Tristan Middleton, 5th grade essay, Santa Fe Trail Elementary. 6th grade poem, Nick Van de Winter, Rising Star Elementary. I'm gonna ruin a few names, folks. 6th grade essay, Annie Caswell, Trailwood Elementary. Do we keep it, am I keeping up? Am I doing okay, Lori? 7th grade poem, Caleb Harris. 7th grade essay, Elena Vargas. 8th grade poem, Campbell Wood, and I'm sorry, that was Indian Hills Middle School. And now Campbell Wood, Indian Hills Middle School. And Caleb Harris is Westridge. Sorry, I didn't give a plug to the principals that are here. Morgan, help me, Morgan. Dusin, Morgan Dusin, it's D-U-S-I-N. 8th grade essay, Indian Woods Middle School. 9th grade poem, Sierra Diaz, Shawnee Mission South High School. And Stephanie's not here, so that next one. 11th grade poem, Sarah Mariani, Shawnee Mission East High School. 11th grade? Did you get it? Are we okay now? Stephanie isn't here, so that... So, Sarah, then are we ready for Lillian? Lillian Dozier, 11th grade essay, Shawnee Mission East High School. It's okay. We can, we... We can get it all straightened. So, 12th grade poem, Claire Nash. And that's Shawnee Mission South High School. And so, who are we missing here? So, do we have Claire? Do you have hers? It's there. It's okay, we'll get it all straightened out. So... 12th grade essay, Joseph Ward, Shawnee Mission South. Okay, what I'm going... To the best that you can, I want the second row to come forward and the first row to go back. So, if you've ever had square dancing lessons, you would know to make the g... Oh, look at that. So, we'll start at the other end. And that is you. And, oh, I should introduce, this is Lori Stanziola, which she runs the Reflection Contest for the District. So, any of you that have kids that are in that, and you don't know if they've won yet, but that will be next month. And then we have Jim, our co-president from the Shawnee Mission Area, SMAC, is what we call ourselves. And he's going to be handing out the second-place ribbons to the Award of Merit Award Winning Writers. So, the first one that we have is Chloe Hanshu. And this is 5th grade poem for Mill Creek Elementary. The next is 5th grade essay, Eva Gazaway, Mill Creek Elementary. 6th grade poem, Elise Harrell, Trailridge Elementary. 6th grade essay, Molly Steed, Brookwood Elementary. I think that was a hoot for you. 7th grade poem, Alexander Murray, Indian Woods Middle School. 7th grade essay, Betsy Goodenow, Westridge Middle School. 8th grade poem, Andrew Schnake, Westridge Middle School. Notice a little thing happening here. 8th grade essay, Sarahi Gonzalez Sanchez, Westridge Middle School. 9th grade poem, Giselle Cisneros, Shawnee Mission South High School. And 11th grade essay, Kimberly, oh, I know you. Tell me. It's with a P-I in it, Pranetta, with an R in there, but it's not there. Shawnee Mission South. So, there's our 2017-2018 Award Winning Writers. So, we're going to take a photograph, a group photograph. Is there a place where, do you want them to move back or? Okay, so scoot, the taller people go back and kinda line up against the curve of the desk there. And then, and then the taller people in the back. And this is a photograph for Shawnee Mission School District photographers here. And so, this is a professional photograph that'll be done and posted on the website and available for all of you. And then after this photograph, we have a reception outside. And along the row, some of you have already taken a peek. But there are certificates and there are prizes that are also available for your award-winning writer. And then there's refreshments. And so, we hope, there's also a poster. I'd like you all to put a word of kindness, if you wouldn't mind. There's pens there for you to do it. It's our kindness. We're focusing on being extra kind right now. Our school district's pretty darn kind, but... Is everybody getting their photos? And anybody on Facebook Live? Your numbers will go up if you do it at least two times a week, so... If you have a business that works, post four times a day. We're done? We're good. So, what's going to happen is writers, go ahead and go out and wait for your families before you pick up any of your awards, okay? You can go stand by your award. And then parents, come on out and have some refreshments. And thank you so much for promoting writing with our kids.
Welcome to the January 22nd, 2018 Board of Education meeting. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us today. Our first item on the agenda is the Superintendent Report. So, Dr. Southwick.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stratton. We have a lot of great information to share tonight. First of all, Health Partnership Clinic is an area that works in the Kansas City metro area to help provide health services for students and families around schools. We know success starts with healthy learners. The Health Partnership Clinic are adding a new federally qualified healthcare center. It will be located at Marion Park Elementary School, and it will open January the 30th, 2018. HBC currently operates clinics in Olathe, Shawnee Mission Paola, and Otto, Kansas. It'll be open for health and behavior visits two days a week. They will accept CanCare, Medicaid, commercial insurance, and also the uninsured. The center will be housed in the existing space at Marion Park School. And the services will be available throughout the school year to any Shawnee Mission School District family that might need that service. Next, Shawnee Mission West Senior has received an award again. Erin Smith, Biotechnology Signature Program, received the Regeneron STS Scholar Award. Honored is one of the nation's most prestigious pre-college science competitions. Only one of two in our state and one of 300 in the country to earn this recognition. Alumni of this recognition program have made significant contributions in science. Some have received the Nobel Peace Prize and the National Medal of Science. This accomplishment adds to a long list of accolades for Erin. We remind, and we've addressed this issue before, but she has researched and developed a diagnostic tool and monitoring that helps detect early stages of Parkinson using an iPhone. Much smarter than, I think, that anything that I might be able to do. So, we're proud of her. Our Shawnee Mission West band, once again, performed in the London New Year's Day Parade. Immigrants traveled on the 2.2-mile route. There was an audience of more than 500,000 spectators at London New Year's Day Parade this year. It's the ninth time that that particular band is performed by invitation, honor, and it's only given to a few bands in the United States. They brought a piece of Kansas with them when they performed "Ez On Down the Road" from the Wizard of Oz-inspired musical, "The Wiz." Very proud of our band, Shawnee Mission West. Three of our schools have received Yearbook Pacemaker Finalists Awards. Shawnee Mission East, North, and Northwest Yearbook staffs were named to the 2017 Yearbook Pacemaker Finalist by the National Scholastic Press Association. Fifty-five national finalists there are in the annual competition. From the group, 24 will earn the Pacemaker Award. Will be announcing at the Annual High School Journalism Convention. The Shawnee Mission East, Hubberk, I hope I got that right.
Hubberk.
Hubberk, Hubberk. I practiced that today. Yearbook editors, Emery Foster, Hope Hess, and Katie Coolman, and advisor Dow Tate. At Shawnee Mission North, Indian Yearbook editors, Morgan Cole, Mariana Orego, and advisor Becky Tate. And at Shawnee Mission Northwest, Alair, Yearbook editor, Tess Holcomb, and advisor Susan Massey. So, we're proud of not only our students for their excellence, but for our advisors and the work that they do every year with our projects, with our students. Shawnee Mission North students spread the cheer this year. It's Children's Mercy Patients, to Children's Mercy Patients. To brighten the season for children undergoing chemotherapy, students and staff at Shawnee Mission North worked together to customize gifts for delivery. Delivered to patients at Children's Mercy Hospital. Students in Angela Hotgrub's Social Studies class were inspired to do this. Hope Graves and a student in their class were both cancer survivors. Briarwood had a pajama drive, and they surpassed their goal this year. Briarwood Bulldogs collected 178 pairs of pajamas to be distributed across our community. They donated them to the Shawnee Mission Area PTA Council Clothing Exchange at Broadmoor. The goal to gather 100 pairs during their collection drive, obviously, they surpassed that to celebrate. They held an all-school pajama party. I don't, I don't remember getting my invitation, but I'm sure they had fun. This one, I did get an invitation to. Rose Hill held their Geometry Fashion Show. To show what they learned about geometry, students designed and built shoes. Students learned about parallel lines, symmetry, shapes. Then some of us got to act as models on their fashion runway. It was a very fun event. Brandy Liggett, great instructional coach that we have at Rose Hill, classroom teachers, all do an excellent job applying real-world concepts to challenging topics like geometry. And my shoe were, shoes were named the Batman Slips. And so, we had a great time that day. I know a few of you were there. It's always nice for us to be involved. Apache IIs have new opportunities for students. They had a Student Choice Day. The Eagles were given a day to choose what they wanted to learn about in school. Called the Student Choice Day for 4th, 5th, and 6th graders. They chose from a menu of different activities, games, building, inventing things, singing, and exploring. Students also explored new areas of interest. So, again, we turned the day back to those students to let us know what the things that they were most interested in. At Highlands Elementary, we have some new art. It will inspire all the hawks there that are learning to soar at Highlands. The structure called the Learning to Soar was dedicated on January 4th, created by David Brenneman, given to the school by the classes of 2013, 14, 15, and 17, and Highlands Community Education Foundation. So, a nice piece of art that will hang there in the building. At Neiman Elementary, 3rd graders presented improvement plans to the city officials of Shawnee. They presented their ideas on ways to make the city better. Including their ideas for the best way to use some of the land in front of their school, they created iMovies and keynote presentations. The judges evaluated the student presentation skills, problem-solving abilities, and benefits to the community. Another great example of school teaching real-world activities and then utilizing our community leaders to provide feedback. Very proud of the students. At Apache IIs, we had a teacher honored for excellence. Alexandria McKenzie, a 3rd grade teacher at Apache IIs Elementary, was named by the State of Kansas as one of the best new teachers with the Horizon Award, given to recognize first-year teachers for outstanding work. We happened to go to the office that day, and it was all staged. And the Commissioner of Education made a phone call to announce to McKenzie that she had won the award. We're very proud of her, and she makes a great difference in Apache IIs. So, congratulations go out to her. Megan Stiggy, rhymes with sticky is what my message is here. Had an article published in the School Library Journal. Megan is certified librarian, certified librarian at Shawnee Mission Northwest High School. She conducted a research on ways to improve reading. It's been very successful and adopted district-wide. Shawnee Mission North coach was named Kansas Cross Country Coach of the Year, Erin Davidson. Head Cross Country Coach at Shawnee Mission North. The annual award is selected by the vote of the coaching colleagues. His cross-country team earned first place at the Kansas High School State Activities Association at the championships this fall. Next, at the Bistro, we have a visiting chef, and I'm sure I will butcher this. Chef Greg Fatagati is, I think, is as close as I can get. Will host a guest dinner at the Broadmoor Bistro. Mr. Fatagati is the Research and Development Chef at Bon appetit at Google. He'll mentor our culinary arts students. He will host a five-course meal for guests at the Broadmoor Bistro, located in the Center for Academic Achievement. The menu will focus on plant-forward eating. Tuesday, January 30th, and it is an open table reservation. And for those of you that haven't done that, get on your iPhones, and let's fill the bistro for Mr. Fatagati and our students. This is the week for the Great Kindness Challenge. It actually began today. This week, the entire district is participating in the 2018 Great Kindness Challenge. While we focus daily on the power of kindness, this is one week where we can all focus on celebrating our culture of kindness. We have big goals this week. Every student, every staff member, we would hope, would complete 50 acts of kindness over the course of the week. If we do that as a district, we equal over 1 million acts of kindness in our district and across our community. A lofty goal, but very attainable as we move forward. We invite the community to join us too, sharing our celebration on Twitter and Facebook. Tag us, the SMSD, and use the hashtag GreatKindnessChallenge. We strive every day to create a safe and welcoming environment for all of our students. This is a week where we can celebrate that. Our Communications Department Award received the Kansprah Kansas School Public Relations Association and KASB, Kansas Association of School Boards Certificate of Merit. We received those for our Jump Start video, direct-from-the-district electronic publication, and new-building dedication ceremonies. It was Award of Excellence for our signature program handout and marketing materials. So, once again, nice to be recognized from outside groups that our people are doing a great job in the Shawnee Mission School District. And last, but definitely not least, January is School Board Recognition Month. And I want to take just a minute to recognize all of you for the time that you spend making sure that Shawnee Mission School District is the best school for district, for our kids in metro area. I keep telling you that I'm gonna triple your pay next year, and I promise to do that. But we all know, three times zero is still zero. So, we want to take just a moment to thank you, let the community thank you as well for the work that you have done and the work that you're going to do as we move forward. Each of you have a care package this evening in front of you. And it is a box of cookies from the bistro. And also, you have a gift certificate. It's not a big gift certificate, I think it's for $5. But you can go to the bistro and have a cup of coffee, or a latte, or something, and have that on us, a very small token of our appreciation. But we're very grateful for your leadership and your dedication to the Shawnee Mission students. So, thank you very much. And now, it's time for one of our highlights. It has been over the last several months, and that's our All-Means All-Star Award. And to get us started, I'd like to introduce Jackie Chapman, who will speak about our first award winner.
Good evening. I'm very privileged and also very excited to be able to introduce our classified All-Means All-Star this evening. Patty King joined Shawnee Mission School District in 2004. She came to the district as a para at Shawnee Mission West. After a few years, she became a job coach at Shawnee Mission East and has since moved to being a job coach at Shawnee Mission South. I think it's important, if you're not sure of what a job coach's responsibilities are, to understand why Patty exemplifies when we say "all means all." She works within the four walls of our building at Shawnee Mission South, getting students ready, training students for their careers to move on past school. She's not only teaching them skills, but she also then takes those students out into the community. And I think that's where it really shows how Patty is an All-Means All-Star. She is out in our community, working with our business partners, developing relationships, and helping support our students as they're out in the community, learning their job skills. But even more importantly, she takes that concept of "all means all" to our businesses and out in our community, helping our businesses, through the relationships that she builds, understand in the workforce what "all means all." I'd like to, I think we have a video ready, and I would like for you all to see even more through the video what it means to be an All-Star.
Lay off your towel, like you normally do. And then we're gonna do the fold. You're gonna take your edges and go all the way to the top.
Patty has a way of figuring out the right approach with each kid to help them do their best. She's great at leading kids.
And so, as I'm leaving, you're going to see your judge again, okay? And you just need to say, "Thank you, Mrs. King."
Thank you, Mrs. King. Friendly, easygoing, pleasant. She is just the most awesome teacher I've ever met.
I am happy she's my teacher because she teaches me a lot of cool stuff I didn't even know.
So, let's try it again. I'm gonna tie you up, Patty. You could get a medal on this, you know that?
Yeah.
This semester, we're participating in Job Olympics. It's an event where students do job preparation skills in a competitive environment. Patty has coordinated everything for Job Olympics. It's my first year, thank God for Patty.
Ten, 10 seconds. You did three seconds after.
We are so lucky to have her. If she was not here, my job would be much more difficult. She sees what needs to be done and does it. She looks at a problem from different angles and is able to figure out ways to sort it out. So, she's amazing.
She's really sweet, really kind, and she's brilliant.
Great, good job, good job.
I think Patty is the perfect example of an All-Means All-Star. Although she's a type of person who wouldn't seek it, she totally deserves it.
I just want to point out that Patty brought her husband, her daughter, and four of her grandchildren, and two are twins, but apparently, they were having some difficulty being quiet. It's just such a privilege to be able to work with these students and here in the Shawnee Mission School District. And I'm honored and grateful to be able to work with the team of staff and teachers, and it's just such a joy. And above all too, we have those community business partners that provide all this for us too, for work experience for these students. And I'm grateful for that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, next award, we have Kristy Darby that's here from Rising Star.
Hello, I am Kristy Darby, the principal at Rising Star, and here to introduce the fabulous Katie Sebel. I brought her nomination letter because I think it really talks about how she really is an All-Means All-Star. So, I said Katie truly embodies the vision of "all means all." She goes over and beyond to meet the needs of all her students by building relationships with not only her students, but their families as well. with not only her students, but their families as well. It's not uncommon for her to call or meet with parents when it's convenient for them outside of her normal duty day. Parents understand and appreciate the high level of care and concern she gives her children, and several have sent me emails or called me to express this. They feel comfort in knowing that she loves her child and helps them to succeed in all areas. Katie builds lasting relationships with teachers and staff, and she consistently comes to Rising Star with a positive can-do attitude that she models for her students. Katie began our substitute welcoming initiative at Rising Star. It was important to her that the substitutes felt comfortable and valued in our building. She's on our building leadership team and is a mentor to new teachers in our building. She is constantly collaborating and sharing her knowledge while being open to new suggestions from other staff. She juggled all this while being a devoted wife and mother to five. She has all five of her girls with her, and her husband out there. That's a big job in itself. The Rising Star community thinks the world of Katie and feels she'd be a great candidate for the All-Means All-Star. So, we have a video of Katie.
I think if I talked to you all day long, I wouldn't be able to properly explain how much I love Katie Sebold. I don't think there are enough words in the English language for that.
Mrs. Sebold is the most selfless and compassionate person I've ever met. If you think of someone who invests their entire self into anybody but themselves, that is Katie in a nutshell.
Now, draw one less than four.
Three.
She always makes sure that there's no kid that's left out, but she's always being intentional about making sure every kid feels loved and welcome, and that there's this community in her classroom.
I think my teacher is the best.
She definitely is "All Means All." She does not leave people out.
Ms. Sebold's room is high-energy. She moves quickly. She moves at the pace of a five- or six-year-old.
Good job, go!
Asher is a kid who came into kindergarten believing that he wasn't smart and couldn't learn, but in one semester, not only is he functioning at grade level and doing everything that a six-year-old child would be able to do, instead of coming home and saying, "I'm stupid, I can't learn," he comes home and says, "I learned so many things today. I'm so smart." Whatever else she has taught him about reading, or writing, or math, she's taught him to believe in himself.
She's the best teacher ever.
You're drawing one.
Mrs. Sebold, Menandall is so, so proud of you, and I cannot think of anyone more deserving of this. Love ya.
You're the best teacher I could have, and you're the best teacher in the whole entire world I could have.
Katie, congratulations. You deserve this award. You are an invaluable part of the Rising Star community, our students and our staff, and our parents, and we are super proud of you. Way to go.
Katie, congratulations on your award. I cannot think of anyone who deserves it like you do. Thank you from the bottom of my heart.
First, I want to thank Clayton back there for putting together a beautiful video. That was wonderful. Thank you. And I want to thank my principals, Kevin, Kristi, and Christie, for cultivating a climate and going to work every day that makes me so excited to walk into work, and when I'm not there, I miss it. To all my coworkers that said such nice things about me, and to that mom, Haley Dean, that took time out of her day to go into work, to meet with Clayton, to say those things. I believe that relationships and communication trump everything, and so, I thank her so much for saying all those things. I want to thank my family, mostly my mom, who wanted me to take public speaking classes, and I didn't, and so, I probably should have, because this is what she was talking about, that I should have done that. That even when you win an award at my age, she'll still take you home, buy you a pretty outfit. So, thank you, Mom. I love you. And I want to say that Shawnee Mission means a lot to our family. My mom was a Viking. My dad was a Lancer. I was an Indian. My brothers were Raiders. And my girls are Cougars, but we like to say they're Northwest Cougars. We have to emphasize that part. But I'm very proud of them, and being a working mom, I couldn't do what I do without that team back there. And then, my husband, who I love so much, who does the laundry and the grocery shopping, because I really stink at it, but we're a team, and I love you guys so much. And I want to thank the administration, who works tirelessly for us, and it's a thankless job sometimes, I'm sure, and our board on behalf of the teachers, and we have amazing teachers in Team 512. Thank you so, so much. I love being a part of this district. Thank you so much.
I can't think of a better way to end my report than those words. So, thank you all.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Southwick, and congratulations once again, not only to our recipients today, but all the family that supports them. Thank you very much for being here and for everything you do for the kids in this district. We appreciate that. Well, this is the first full board meeting of the calendar year, and we've welcomed three new board members. We did that officially at our meeting on January 8th, but this is their first time in the seat and doing the work of the district. And as you'll see, we've got them, all of us, working together on day one. As you'll see, it's a seven-member board, and each of us today have a role in what we're doing. And with that, we've got a couple of presentations from the work of the board, and I'll turn to Mrs. Mack, who will give us an update on the Board Manual Task Force and the work that they've been doing. Mrs. Mack?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Stratton. I'm going to be handing out, right now, the draft changes for public participation at board meetings. Mr. Stratton asked us to review current procedures, policies, et cetera, that pertain to our open forum. And I, along with Deb Zila and Laura Guy, looked over those policies and procedures. We brought, we're bringing this at the beginning of the agenda because this is extremely important, and it's important to our board. Also, want to emphasize that this is discussion, discussion procedures. This is not a first reading whatsoever. We would like to tell you, give you overviews of the recommendations that we are bringing forward, and we will have comment at a later time at our next board workshop. So, I'd like to start by saying that we looked across at several documents. We looked at policies. We looked at guidelines, et cetera. So, while some of the language that we're recommending is not identical, there is consistency. We'd also like, we are recommending that it be called, not "open forum," but it would be called "public comment," because we believe that it more accurately reflects the purpose of that portion of our business meetings. Mrs. Zila?
Yes, as Mrs. Mack said, we're looking at the policies that kind of pertain to our public participation. One of them is a complaint policy, and that's Policy KN, that you can find online on the website there. And that's about complaints, and certainly, there are always things that come up that you may have issue with. But there is a chain of communication to go through, and that will walk you right through it. So, we're hoping that that might help alleviate the process and resolve things a little more easily if you refer to that. We're looking at the language that's in the Board Manual that was just approved this past fall, I believe it was. And one of the things that's in there is about criticizing board members. And I will tell you right now that that's something that we would all, I think, recommend, at least on the task force, and I think the board, to strike from that document. But there's a lot of other things that we're looking at, just to have it really more of what our practice is and what we want to have available for our public comment and
I might also add, before Mrs. Guy speaks, that I have a copy for each of the board members for Dr. Southwick and Mrs. Wintering. And Mrs. Wintering, I would, we would ask that that be posted on the district website?
Yes, it'll be posted on the Board of Education page. There'll be a tab on the lower, right-hand side on that page tomorrow.
Great. Thank you. All right, Mrs. Guy?
So, one of the things we discussed is, for people who really have a question that they would like to have answered, it would, we're going to suggest, not a requirement by any means, but a suggestion, that if there is a question that someone would like to have answered, that if they submit their request to speak by Friday at 3:30, then Mrs. Wintering will have that, and she could give that information to the correct staff person, employee, that might be able to look up information to have available. That person then could possibly even contact the person who wanted to speak ahead of time to address the question, or at least in the board meeting, they would have some information to answer someone's question. So, that's going to be something that we're going to hopefully let people know if they would like an answer, that if they can get their request in by Friday, that'll give them some time to hopefully get some answers for them. And then, but people will still be permitted to put in a request to speak up until 6:50 PM the evening of a board meeting, so we're not changing that at all. And so, one of the things we'll spell out a little bit is just to remind people that generally, the board's not going to respond to comments during the public comment time, except to ask perhaps clarifying questions. So, if someone is upset about something, and we feel like we need more information before we can find an answer or solution, we may ask a clarifying question just to make sure we understand. But other than that, we generally won't have a response, because we'll be hearing it for the first time, and we'll need to gather more information before we have a response.
And just to kind of get our brains around exactly what it is "open forum" is, we've had some legal advice from this, and, you know, we were told it's not mandated, certainly by law, to have "open forum" at your board meeting. We only have one board meeting a month. It's our business meeting. But we value your opinions, and we would like to hear what you have to say. So, we think it's important that we have that as part of our meetings. And the process is going to be a lengthy one. I don't, I don't think that maybe, obviously, this month, we don't have, you know, our recommendations solidly, but it's a process. And I think, I was talking with board members from other districts, and it's like, this is something that we all face, and we all want to be kind of on the same page with this, so that we know that we're, you know, offering all the same things to our patrons here. So, I think it could be a longer process, actually, if we include other school districts within Johnson County, or even, you know, through KASB and the state of Kansas, so that we get this right.
Well, I want to thank Mrs. Zila and Reverend Guy for working on this. We were presented this challenge, how many days ago, Mr. Stratton?
Two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks ago, and we've had a lot of things going on in that two weeks. But I'm, we are all really looking forward to the rest of the board digesting this, reviewing it, and we're looking for your comments at our next board workshop. I really want to emphasize that this is a draft, and it, as Mrs. Wintering said, it will be available on the Shawnee Mission School District website, on the board page. It is a work in progress, and it will continue to be a work in progress. Pretty sure that there are going to be some comments and opinions from our patrons on the draft, and for that reason, I would like to offer my email address, pattymack@smsd.org. If you would like to send those comments or opinions directly to me, I will do my very best to try and synthesize that information and present it to the board before our board workshop meeting next month. Again, I know board members may wish to comment at this time, but I just want to reiterate, this is not a first reading. This is discussion procedures on how we are going to continue in the future on this issue. It is just information for our review, and as Mr. Stratton says, we will be discussing this at our next board workshop.
Thank you for that report, and thank you for the work that you've done. Do any board members have any quick comments or questions before we move on to the next item? Yes, Mrs. Ausley?
Sorry, I have to dig out my microphone from all these papers. So, I just wanted to be clear that we, the members of the board that didn't work on the drafting team have not seen this until now, so this is our first look at it as well. I did not know that we were not going to be discussing it tonight. I thought we would have some discussion, because I, I mean, which is fine, I just, I thought we would be having more discussion this evening about it, so that we could, you know, read through and have questions. But if we're doing that at our next workshop, when is that? What date is that? Is that right before our next meeting, or is that, so, and is that open to the public, and the public can attend, so while we're having that discussion? And are there copies available for distribution this evening, if anyone here in attendance wanted to get a copy before it went up on the web, or?
It will be on the website tomorrow, or tonight, or what have you.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions?
And Mrs. Ausley, to answer your question better, that's why we wanted to do a presentation, to explain the highlights of the draft. And again, it is not a first reading. It is for just draft discussion purposes.
Yes.
Okay. So, for process clarification, then, so if I have suggestions, thoughts, comments, I bring them, I'm not sharing them beforehand, I'm bringing, the first time I would share them with anybody here would be bringing them to the next, to the workshop. That would be the point in time. Like, I'm not going to be sending suggested edits to you like maybe the community might.
Correct. But if you have any clarifying questions that we can answer, Reverend Guy, or Mrs. Zila, or myself, or, you know, phone call away.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for those clarifying questions. And again, part of the importance of this process was to have board members do the work of the board, and so, thank you for that work. And additionally, we want to have these discussions with the seven board members around the table. So, that's also why we're being very intentional about making no decisions as we move through the process, but instead, doing it at the board workshop. And once we have the three-person task force present, then we can begin to discuss, so that the true work of the board takes place in public. That's very important to us. This is all important, also about the level of civic engagement that we, as a board, have. I'm going to assume that some of the younger folks in the class, in the room here, are here because of some form of civics class that might have them here, and we'll make sure that we give them some things to talk about when they go back to their class. So, with that, we hope that this has been a helpful conversation, as well as you go back to the classroom and talk about civic engagement too. So, again, thank you for your work on that. And with that, we have our legislative update. I'd like to invite Dr. Stuart Little to come forward to give us the update on the Kansas legislative process that's kicked off, and we're moving along in Topeka.
I sat too far in the back. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. First time to get to appear in front of all. I appreciate the opportunity. Stuart Little with Little Government Relations in Topeka. I'm going to talk briefly about legislative update, talk about some stuff that's coming up in the legislature. I'll be happy to answer any questions if I can't come up with the answer. While I'm standing up here, I'll get back to you. And this is a written report that'll be posted on the website after it's presented. Obviously, we're at the beginning of the third week of the legislative session. We're making, we're going through days, but we're not necessarily making progress. I always feel like the legislative session starts very slowly, and then, this is my 23rd legislative session, and I've just realized it feels that way every single time. So, they are doing generally informational hearings, and I'll talk briefly about some of those that are going on, but there's a brief summary in my report. In the Governor's State of the State address, there were, and budget recommendations were of the variety of early childhood and education-based recommendations that he made in his budget. There was, of course, no funding that was going to go in there to help increase some of those things that he recommended, increased counselors and college credits, those 15 hours of credits, there's a list of those. Those aren't, those issues have been laid out there by the governor, but they haven't been picked up by anybody yet. We haven't started digging through the budget process and through his education proposal. I will mention, and every time I'm going to be giving you a report and sending that along, talking about tax policy, just briefly, just to keep that in mind, because one of the underlying issues in front of the legislature this year is the response to the Gannon Supreme Court decision, both in terms of equity, dealing with the equity issues in Senate Bill 19 that was passed last year, as well as the adequacy, how much money needs to get added back in. The legislature has been getting briefings on tax policy. There are reported on this in the fall, and there's a kind of a growing recognition. We are not going to know how much revenue the state has until after the 16th of April, when the last round of tax collections come in, in particular because of LLCs and sub-s corps and those types, who are paying income tax for the first time ever. Further complicating that as well is changes in federal tax policy that happened, have an impact, some of them up, some of them down, on deductibles, on tax rates, what's going to be. Literally, states are competing with each other, trying to figure out what federal changes in tax policy are going to mean for revenue, and so, that's complicating this even more. The only reason I bring that up, A, because it's interesting for people that follow this stuff, but it's going to have an impact on- stuff, but it's going to have an impact, impact on revenue that's available for the legislature to spend on adequacy, and how, and how and when those kinds of objectives can be met. So, I'll keep bringing that up. I would mention, in the last couple of we, in the last two weeks, the legislature primarily has been getting on the education committees, now I'm going to kind of shift to talking about that, getting briefings on the Gannon decision, updates on the, the court's opinion, the efforts of the select, the special collect committee, on, select committee on a response to school finance, or whatever the big long name is, the group. Then the recommendations that they came up with, which were essentially laying out the issues and, and demonstrating that it would require 18% budget cuts to respond to the court in the way that, that the court left that message after, they made no recommendations to the legislature, they talked a little bit about constitutional amendments, but all those issues are just kind of set to the side now at this point. The State Department of Education has made a couple of presentations, and will continue into next week, talking about the Kansas CAN redesign project, which is innovative stuff that's going on lots of places around the state. And there have also been a few presentations from what was the Mental School, Mental Health and School Advisory Council, that started making an assessment and coming back and giving some information about the need for counselors and social workers in the school system. There's lots of interesting overlap between provisions of mental health in the schools, and then how much mental health is being dealt with between the mental health provider system and the schools, and that back and forth, and how much of that may have some impact on, on school finance and those kind of things. Coming up this week, we're going to continue with a few of those, those same kinds of issues. In the next couple of weeks, the Mental Health Advisory Committee Teacher of the Year Presentations will be made on Tuesday of this week, and then we're going to have our, our first bills that are going to come up for hearing this week, and so, I'll move through and talk about those. There are basically, as the session begins to unfold, I'm watching for a couple of things. Gannon response, which is adequacy and equity, and we've essentially done nothing other than say, they're out there and we need to do something, and I'm not saying that to, to, to point a finger at anybody over there, it's just, it's taking the legislature, as it always does, some time to figure out, how do we want to respond? There's nothing that's been put together in a structured, organized response, lots of people having conversations, but nothing's been put on paper in terms of what number are we looking for, how do we get there? There is a bill that addresses most of the equity issues, and that's, and I'll, I'll mention that here in a second, but that's one, kind of the Gannon. The other one, a couple of things that have come up since, as part of that school finance bill, are, are the issue related to the bond and interest cap that went on, that went in there, and that heads, going to put a, a cap on the, the use of bond interest statewide, based on a rolling average, and it's fairly technical description, but if it's allowed to stay there, at some point down the road, if we needed a bond project, there may be a statewide cap that would keep us from doing what we needed to do. There are conversations going on about how to address that. Transportation issue, as you were well aware, there was a legislative post-audit about transportation and the formula that had been used for a number of years, and some of the changes that will be made, may need to be made and put into statute to fix that, so that we don't lose, we and many other urban districts don't lose funding for transportation for our students. That's a component and one of the pieces of legislation. And then, the other issue that I'm watching are a set of these bills. We don't have a whole lot of bills this year. I will, keep in mind, everything that was alive last year is still alive this year, so if anything comes up and gets attention this year, I'll make sure that it gets added back to our list, but I'm, I'm, I don't intend to give you a list of 50 bills here in my packet, I can do that if you'd like to have all of them, but these are the ones that are kind of alive for right now. And I'll mention two in particular that are coming up this week, and then one other one. House Education Committee on Thursday of this week is going to do a hearing on the due process for teachers, and it'll be an, an adjustment that will provide, restore the due process procedures for teachers who were teaching in the school district that they're in now on July 1 of 2014. You'll recall the legislature passed a law that took out that independent hearing in the, through the process. This will add that back to teachers who were employed at that time. This is a bill from Chairman Arn, who chairs the House Education Committee, and then we'll have a hearing on that on Thursday. It's Thursday, Wednesday? It's Wednesday. And then Thursday, same committee will hear a transportation bill. There was a bill that was introduced that would require a school district for a student that lived within 2.5 miles of a school district, if there was no safe pedestrian path to get to school, that they would have to be picked up and, and driven to school. We do that already as a policy decision, and, and this bill is very prescriptive in what it means to be unsafe, and right now, that's something that the district decides. So, those are the two hearings. The other issue, bill that came up, has to do with assistive technology, Braille and sign language, and private, not-for-profit school system, going to those schools and providing those services there, which currently are done at the, at, the services are provided, but they're provided through the, the district. There are a, a number of other issues, but those are the first ones that we're going to have hearings on coming up this week. I suspect, as budget information is unveiled with the, the governor's budget, there'll be some, some discussion about early childhood parents as teachers, some of those early head start things that the governor made some recommendations about. I'll make sure and include those in here, as I know some of you'll have a lot of interest in that. That's kind of big picture overall where we are. There's, there's one of those situations where there's a lot going on and there's nothing going on, because a lot of it's still caught the level of conversation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, Mrs. Zela?
Yeah, I just, for kind of a clarification point, I know we've all heard a lot about Governor Brownback's $600 million windfall to education, but of that 600,000, the 126 million that was put into the formula last year, that's a part of that 600,000, is that correct? 600 million, excuse me.
A million, a billion, a hundred thousand, right, right. Yeah, that's part of it, as well, as if you factored in how to invest that money, that, or, that money, that doesn't include what would be the cost of living, the CPI increase that's supposed to be built in to what's going on, and that would be, would be counted as a part of that as well. And of course, I think for legislators, and this is kind of no matter where you are on the spectrum of legislators, the frustration was, to propose that and to lay out a, a long list of things that, that were, of objectives, the, the revenue, the resources weren't there to match up with what was being proposed, and that was kind of a source of the frustration as well.
Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Ausley.
So, on the due process bill that's in the Education Committee, what is KNEA's position on that particular due process bill?
Whose position?
KNEA's position on that particular, on Iran's due process bill, what was KNEA's position on that? Have they taken a position on that one, since it splits who applies, who gets the protection from before 2014 and after 2014?
Without knowing for certain, I would hesitate to state what another organization's position is on a bill. So, I, I, I'll check my Mark DiSetti email file and, and be happy to send an email back to.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Dr. Sinclair.
So, I had two questions. One was just in follow-up to that, I did not see any action alerts from, on any of the kind of three hearings next week. Typically, there might be action alerts from organizations to put out a call for public, you know, for organizations to come in and provide testimony. So, I've not, have you seen any action alerts on the due process?
I, the due process is interesting, because I think for KNE, well, and, and that's why I, I'm getting it to you first, that's, I'll take credit for that. But, the, that's part of the issue, because it's not exactly what the KNEA wants to see as a resolution, and KASB has their own take on this, and they're not in the same place, and that may lend itself to people wondering how they want to proceed, maybe, that may be a reflection of that. Because I don't recall seeing anything kind of calling out for folks to do work on this.
Okay. So, my other, my other question is, in relation to this hurry-up-and-wait, I don't know if it's a hurry-up-and-wait mentality, if that's an accurate description of what's happening in Topeka, but there are pieces of the Gannon decision that, that maybe could be addressed partially, and maybe that's one of the bills that you were mentioning, just looking at part of the equity fix. But, is, is there this desire to wait and do everything at once, until the adequacy study is published, or do you see some momentum on some pieces happening, so that if the adequacy, adequacy study comes out and indicates a number that we should be funding out? I'm concerned that there's just going to be this hurry-up-and-wait, and then when it's time to get everything done, mid-March and March, end of March, there's not going to be the ground, the homework done to kind of plug and play.
Well, and, and I appreciate the question, and that's one of those kinds of questions that, it is, for example, the, the House K-12 Budget Committee is not meeting this week. And that's the group that wrote the House bill last year. The Senate Education Committee has been meeting and doing informational briefings. The Senate Select Committee on School Finance, which was the Senate's committee that wrote the bill last year, has not met and has nothing scheduled. And so, the bill, the, the House Bill 2445, which is Representative Ricker's bill, which has all of the equity fixes in it, plus one of the, the transportation fix, and those kinds of things in it, which has, that address, I believe, all of the court's equity issues, has been introduced, it's sitting there, and there can be a hearing on that. I, I believe that what's happening right now, and of course, the consultants have been tasked with go to make their recommendations, this will come back on March 1st, peer reviews should be done by the 15th, or something like that, so, the legislature will have something back. The problem is, the legislature adjourns on the 6th of April, and so, they're going to get these reports back on the 15th of March, and trust me, the last three weeks of the legislative, of the regular session of the legislature are the worst possible time to say, okay, we're going to carve out 60 hours to talk about school finance, because that's when all the rest of the work's going to be done. So, I would suspect, and I've had conversations with what I believe to be the, the right people, saying, we're talking about how to lay the groundwork to get everything done, so when those studies come back, that, that becomes our, that's our, we have built the rationale, which is what the court has been saying, show your work. They will have had time through February and into March to build the case, and then they'll be able to take whatever the consultants bring back and say, that's where we plug in. Now, how that matches up on the funding side, with how you're going to get 63, 21, and 1 to fund it, that's different, but I think the educational process, one would, I believe the conversations are taking place about how to structure that, it's just nothing that's started to get rolled out.
And not in committee? Those conversations aren't happening?
No, these are, these are people sitting around having conversations about what do, what do, how do you think we ought to do this? Oh, I think we should lay the groundwork, let's go talk to two more people about it. I mean, that's how it works.
I want to ask Dr. Southwick if he would also give us an update on, on the due process that relates back to Shawnee Mission, because I want to make sure that we're clear that this is a bill that had been out there for a couple of years, this is a revision to that, and how it may or may not affect Shawnee Mission.
So, I think it was 2014, when kind of late at night, these due process changes were written into the law, and for whatever reason. Happy to say, in Shawnee Mission, we still have the professional negotiated agreement that we've always had, so it really doesn't affect us. We didn't change the way we did business since 2014, and it provided what we believe all of the due process rights that were in place before. And any changes that we'd made, we'd made at the table with our organization, so I think the decision for districts would be, and the concepts are, is this a local decision that should be made? But the way it stands for us, we're, we're neutral, and as we move forward, we'll make a decision about, you know, if we make a statement or not. But it really does not affect the way the Shawnee Mission School District operates with its employees.
Great, thank you for that. And we are very fortunate to have Dr. Atha, who's also our liaison with what's going on legislatively. Coming up at the 31st, you want us to give us a, an update on what that looks like? I'm, returning back to Dr. Little, what, what does that look like on that event, where we will be coming out to be at the, the legislative lunch on the 31st?
Oh, sure. Yeah, on the 31st, we, along with the other Johnson County school districts, will be hosting a, a lunch for the Johnson County Legislative Delegation, and talking about collectively as a group, I think each of us will have a little bit of time to talk about achievements, accomplishments, and then, I think we're having some generalized conversations about putting together a list of, of issues that all of the districts in, in, in the county share in terms of, of messaging to the members of the delegation. That's obviously something that we'll be putting together and circulating for feedback to make sure it's reflective of what you all are interested in doing, but we look forward to it, and I hope everybody can make it.
Well, thank you for organizing that. I think what makes this one unique for us, maybe, is that all six of the districts, is that true?
Yes.
From, from the Johnson County area? So, it's very helpful when board members, superintendents, and other staff are together, representing collectively some conversation with our delegation there. So, thank you for helping put that together. Any other questions for Dr. Little?
I would just mention that during this important session, we will ask Dr. Little to come back and do a presentation for us. I'm sure as we sit here a month from now, things will have changed dramatically, so we'll.
Well, thank you for that, I appreciate that. I, I do, I do want to, I, I think this is going to be, I want to maintain a dialogue with you all to make sure that you all know what's going on as, as often as possible, and so, I welcome the chance to come back anytime I can, and I plan on coming back through the session.
And if it wasn't already said before, that the written reports are also made available on our website, too. So, we appreciate that way of communicating, too. Mary?
Can I, just one clarifying question. So, on the 31st, there might be, so we could maybe expect some recommendations on joint position statements from the six districts?
Right now, representatives of, of, of the districts, we're, we're talking about what do, looking at the legislation that we have, what do we share, and then we're going to say, circulate that, just so there, it's what we've done in the, with the past when we've had everybody there.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, Dr. Little. Appreciate your working with us.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go on to agenda item, or letter D, which is our Procedures for Open Forum. And we do have two folks that would like to share their comments with us, so I'll, I'll read a paraphrase of what our guidelines are at this point, but as you just heard, we're revising those as we go. But I'll ask that each of the presenters tonight spend, share up to three minutes of their comments that they come before us. They will come up and state their name and their address, and, and the organization that they're representing. We ask that they be civil, respectful language, and that we'll be discussing matters, perhaps, that are directly or indirectly related to the work at hand to the board. The board will not give a formal response at this point to any specific questions, but we'll certainly be able to provide follow-up information after the meeting. And with that, I'll invite our first guest, and it's Tracy Osborne-Ultchen.
Good evening, President Stratton and the new 2018 Board. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. I'm Tracy Osborne-Ultchen, I'm the president of the Overland Park Chamber, address is 9001 West 110th in Corporate Woods, Overland Park. And tonight, I'm here in my capacity as the president of the Chamber of Commerce, really here for two purposes. The first one, as many of you know, the Chamber celebrated its 50th anniversary this past year, and that gave us a great opportunity to really reflect on our history, which in many ways is very parallel with the history of the Shawnee Mission School District. And along with that reflection, it gave us the chance to reiterate within our membership, and particularly within our Board of Directors, that the success of Overland Park and this region and the business community is really dependent upon our number-one economic development tool, which is our public education system. And so, we felt that it was appropriate that I spend a little bit of time this month visiting each of our districts within the Overland Park area, and so, you all are the last one on the calendar, not the last one in priority, but just in terms of when you were having your meetings with public comment, to come and just express to you all the importance and our thanks at your success in, in creating workforce that is so critical to our business community over the last 50 years. When I look back, as I have this past year, at the original minutes of our Board of Directors and all of the media articles from the '60s and '70s and '80s up to today, you can really trace our history that is parallel with yours, and our support of your growth initiatives and those school bond issues, although the numbers were a lot smaller back in the late '60s and '70s, but they're really very parallel. And so, I'm here to say thank you to you all as the governing body of Shawnee Mission, to Dr. Southwick, to all of the administrators, the educators in the classroom, and everyone who's there to support them. And hopefully, you all can extend my congratulations on behalf of our Board of Directors and our members, to everyone, whether they are directly teaching, whether they're providing food service, or transportation, or cleaning the classrooms, whatever it is that they do to help deliver that education, they are absolutely critical to the success of this county and the success of our economy and all of our business. and all of our businesses. And we know that often, from this day, as you're hearing criticisms or how you can do it better, but we want to relay the fact that we know you do it extremely well, and really, you're the best in the country, and we want to say thank you. So, that really is the first part of my message. The second is that we want to encourage you all as the governing body, everyone, and the staff and administration, and particularly, I see lots and lots of students here, and so I hope they'll take this message back to their fellow students and, and to home, to participate in the city of Overland Park's visioning effort called Forward OP. And I've provided to you all and some additional copies that Mrs. Wincharing has, and I know that in talking with Dr. Southwick, you have this digitally, and you've shared this throughout the district. Forward OP has the first community engagement session that is Tuesday night, that January 30th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Overland Park Convention Center. We have a fabulous futurist who will be there, talking about loving your city, and he'll talk for part of the time, but the rest of the time is really a workshop that really gives all of us the opportunity to envision what kind of community we want Overland Park to be for the next 30 years. And I can't emphasize enough that we want all voices to be there, all age groups, all demographic groups, not just the business community, not just the education community, but please share this information with your family and your friends and your coworkers to come and share what kind of place you want Overland Park to be, not just for yourself, but for your children and your grandchildren. And you can find out more at the website, Forward OP. So, just quickly, thank you so much for the good work that you do. Workforce development and talent development are the top priorities of our board. We want to continue to be your partner going forward, and so, thank you for your service as the board. We also want to thank Dr. Southwick. He's now serving on our Board of Directors at the Chamber, and we appreciate his good partnership with us as well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, I'd like to invite Izzy Cunningham to come forward.
Hi, I'm Izzy Cunningham. I'm a senior at Shawnee Mission West. My address is 8101 Carter Street, and I am here to present about special education. I am a cadet teacher at West, and I have gotten the opportunity to get to know these kids, students. And my concern is the teaching that we have available right now is not up to par with what we need for these kids. I know with one of our students, they have to walk around to understand the information that I'm teaching them. And then we have another student who verbalizes way better than they can write. And so, their information that they know is not being shown, and they're not getting credit for it, or they're not getting taught the same way that they understand. So, what I'd like to see is improvement of structure. I want to see these teachers get to know these students on a personal level, so they know those differences, so they understand who they're dealing with, notice that they are people, and most of all, they have special needs, which doesn't make them lesser, but they actually make them more important in a way. So, I know it has been talked about a little bit, but it hasn't been brought up a big amount because of the speak. The speaking with the kids is not being translated, because they don't have the opportunity to understand, you know, the differences. We're getting taught differently, because we are settling for the bare minimum of the teachers for them in a certain way, at least shown at Shawnee Mission West. For example, we have teachers that don't even know how to write demonstration. And just because the kids don't know how to spell it, doesn't mean the teacher shouldn't know how to spell it. The structure for these kids has to fluctuate, and without having the time or the energy put in to have that flexibility for each separate kid, then that means they're pretty much getting no education. Because they are so different, we can't be putting the same guidelines on everybody. And when they go home, even though they're not going to go to the same places that we all imagined for everybody else, they're still going places, and we should be able to give them what we can, which is an education that they can receive. For teachers, when we line them up, all in the class or out of the whole school, we want to see that almost all of them are succeeding. And that's great. But what we want for sure is that the special education teachers are one of the best teachers in that classroom, or in that school. Because not only do they need to provide the education, but they also need to go above and beyond and give that understanding, care, and that flexibility to understand a person and their needs. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your coming forward. And we do appreciate that you're advocating on behalf of students in the school. So, thank you very much for taking the time to do that. We appreciate that. And with that, that wraps up the open forum portion for today, and we'll move on to Agenda Letter E, and that is the approval of minutes. And I'll seek a motion to approve the minutes of the December 18th meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Goodburn, seconded by Mrs. Mack. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And abstentions?
Aye.
Is this the 18th?
It's four zero.
Four zero. Thank you. I did not hear, that's why I asked. We'll seek the approval for the minutes of the January 8th meeting.
So, moved.
Moved on the January 8th meeting.
Second.
Second. It's been moved by Mrs. Zilla and seconded by Mrs. Goodburn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right, thank you. And the special meeting that took place this weekend, the meeting of January 20th, seek a motion.
So, moved.
Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Goodburn, seconded by Mrs. Zilla. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, seven zero. Thank you. We'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. This is the agenda as a whole, not to be confused with the consent agenda. This is Letter F. I'll seek a motion to approve and exempt the agenda as presented.
Move approval of the adoption of agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Mrs. Zilla and Reverend Guy, seconded. All those in favor of adopting the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, seven zero. We now move on to Item G, which is the approval of routine business by consent. As a quick reminder, consent agendas are provided on, on an agenda in order to package together many items that are seen as annually renewed, or reviewed, or routine. Additionally, of late, we've been including items that might be under a financial item of $250,000 or less, that we're pulling all items that are above $250,000 for consideration out to the regular agenda. So, we have several items in there, and the first thing I'll ask, does anyone like to remove any item from the consent agenda before seeking approval?
Yes. I would like to remove something from the consent agenda. I wanted to remove under I-2, the approval for schoolteachers and leaders to attend the Solution Tree PLC conferences.
Okay, so that is Item I-1.
Oh, two.
Sorry, I-2. You're right. Thank you. I-2. All right, we'll, we'll do that.
So, I move approval of the.
Can I ask a more quick question? Anyone else have anything they'd like to remove from the agenda? For the consent agenda, rather? All right, great. Then what we'll do is we'll seek a motion to approve the consent agenda with Letter I-2 removed.
So, moved.
Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mrs. Mack and Mrs. Goodburn, seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda with Letter I-2 removed, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. And now, we'll lift up Consent Agenda Item I-2, and that is the approval of the teachers and leaders to attend the Solution Tree. Would you like any comment or question?
Yeah, so, when we were reviewing this, or when I was reviewing this, I had questions that popped up, and so, as to promote transparency, I wanted to ask the questions publicly, so that everyone could get the same answers that I was getting. It's not necessarily that I'm opposed to it, it's just there's more information that I wanted, and I thought if I wanted the information, that other folks might want the information. So, Dr. Southwick, do I direct the questions to you? Is that okay, or do I?
Yeah, it'll be good. And we happen to have some staff here tonight that work with it on a day-to-day basis that'll be able to answer maybe more succinctly. But I want to first say that, that our professional learning communities on our school have been a priority over the last several years. We do strongly believe that teachers having the time and the ability to have conversations about how to meet the needs of kids on an ongoing basis is extremely important. We know that is best conveyed not by sending administrators off to conferences by themselves and have them bring that information back, and then move that from top down. So, we have worked through Dr. Hubbard's department and other district administrators in the buildings to work with a grassroots effort around staff members to make this happen. If you remember, I think it was October, when we brought a presentation together in front of the board, where we talked specifically about one of the conferences, and we had the teachers speak to the benefits of those. So, it is something that is rooted very strongly right now in terms of our mission, to be able to meet the needs of students and also meet the needs of our, of our faculty. And that is probably the extent of what I want to speak to. If we get specific kinds of questions, I've got Dr. Hubbard and her staff here, be glad to answer those for you.
Great. So, I have a few of them. And so, it, so we're approving this for educators at 13 schools to attend. Is that correct, the 13 schools? And then, does that mean that educators at the remaining schools in the district have already attended the training?
I pulled the stats this morning. We have 17 buildings that still need to attend. So, we said approximately 13. There's a good chance we'll get all 17, keeping in mind that two of those 17 are Horizons and the Early Childhood Center. Sometimes we will integrate them in with a school team, and sometimes they may go by themselves, but we'll do our best to make sure every building is touched by this last round. But yes, up to this point, we have, in every feeder, at least three schools, but up to seven or eight schools per feet in, in some of the feeders. So, every feeder has been touched by training at this point, and every school sends a representation, one administrator, usually an instructional coach, and then three teachers. Sometimes they'll send four teachers, but almost always, there's at least three teachers per building.
Okay. How are the educators chosen to attend the events? Is there like an application process, or is it cyclical, so that we're touching everyone who wants an opportunity to go?
So, there will never be an opportunity, I'm just going to be direct, for every educator to attend this particular conference. It would take years and years to cycle them through, and so, we're looking sort of at a train-the-trainer model. So, the team that goes is responsible, and they, they understand that this is a responsibility when they sign on to go, that they come back and share the information with the other teachers in the, in the building. We have given the autonomy to building principals to choose who goes. In some cases, it might be a grade-level team or a department-level team at a middle or high school. In some cases, principals have chosen grade-level, a third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade to infuse more people. Sometimes it could be, the principal says, I really need this team to go to the next step, and they're great leaders, so I want to choose them. Others, other principals have said, I want to choose this team, because they're a rock star team, and they've got it going on, and so, I think they can only get better, and again, come back and share that with their colleagues. But being able to be a leader, have, have that buy-in and credibility with the teams back home is extremely important into who goes, because it is a train-the-trainer model.
And is the cost of the Solution Tree conferences in line with other conferences?
Absolutely. And I'm going to ask Kevin to talk a little bit about the Solution Tree, and maybe Darren, specifically as to why the Solution Tree and, and what that looks like. But as far as cost for other conferences, national conferences, or conferences out of state, cost-wise, it's absolutely very comparable.
Great.
So, for PLCs, Solution Tree really is sort of the go-to resource for education. So, it was conceived back, I don't know, probably 20-some years ago by Rick and Becky DeFors, so they sort of created that, and then, as a result, created Solution Tree to support PLCs. And so, what these conferences do, is the DeFors have, and, and that group have identified practitioners throughout the country who come and share their success stories, their resources, their products with teacher teams. What's really unique about the, the PLC conference, as Solution Tree puts it forth, is that those teams, you get an opportunity as part of the, the conference to sit down as a team and actually plan, to, to create the vision for your team going back with those practitioners present. And so, it's a really great opportunity for, not only to bring that learning, but to also create a plan as you are there, because, as you know, being in schools, teachers, there certainly isn't just an abundance of time. So, it's nice to be able to set aside time there to be able to create that vision and come back and be able to bring that back to the staff.
Thank you, guys, for doing that. I, I realize this seems a little silly, but I figure if I have the question, then someone else might have the question. I prefer to ask it here and let everybody hear the answer. So, thank you.
One thing I just wanted to share, Culture's Built to Last, it's, it talks about the building a systemic approach for PLCs. And this is a book study we did two years ago now with our administrative team, and then multiple schools have actually purchased this book. I would say probably more than 50% have purchased this book and done book studies for their staff. It's a simple, easy read. I would be glad to purchase it for any of you if you would like it. It just talks about the systemic approach, and so, I think it's really important for our work around PLC, so I'll get those.
We already.
This is why I love. It's amazing team, so.
That's great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment to make, and having been in an elementary school, that, that staff, the lead, the building leader and some of the staff members both took me aside and said, thank you so much. That was such a valuable, great time, and I've been able to share so many great things with, you know, my colleagues here in the building. So, that, that's kind of above and beyond, that they would take me aside and, and actually say that, so.
And every time we send a team, I get multiple emails saying, thank you, it's so valuable, and I'd be glad to share any of those with you. And I know you guys did those as well, but I do think they're very appreciative of the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, any questions regarding the item on the agenda here? Seeing no other questions, I'll seek a motion to approve. I guess we already did that, didn't we?
Nope.
Okay. Seek a motion to approve. I-2.
Second.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Mrs. Zilla, seconded by Mrs. Goodburn. All those in favor approving Agenda Item I-2? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Thank you, and thank you for the information on that, too. With that, I've already lost track. Did we approve the consent agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, here we go, page two. Moving on to P-1, and this is the Business Services, and we're looking at the P-1. Dr. Southwick?
Yes, as a part of our ongoing work to maintain our facilities, as you know, coming out of Mr. Robinson's office was a long-range plan to look at roofs and a lot of other systems that we have across the district, but we're asking tonight for you to approve the 2018 roof improvements for Corinth, Indian Woods, and Shawnee Mission North High School. And the total cost of that, and these were bid in one company, actually, they were bid individually, and one company had the low bid on all of those. So, we're asking you to approve tonight the bid for $1,847,500, and that will allow us to do that roof work this summer and have our roofs patched. And then I can guarantee you, we will be coming back to you at a later date with more roof projects.
Thank you. Any questions about the, the item?
I would move approval.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodburn?
Second.
Second. Mrs. Zilla, thank you. All those in favor of the item, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Thank you. Passes seven zero. With that, we move to Q, Q-1, and I'll turn to Dr. Southwick.
Yes, so, we already spoke in the superintendent's report about the proclamation, the Great Kindness Challenge Week, and actually, we had a parent at Benninghoven who was very interested in going to the city of Shawnee and having them endorse a proclamation for their school and their community. And they reached out to Dr. Ziegler and said, wouldn't it be great if our 14 communities in our school board would adopt this proclamation? So, we brought that to you tonight for consideration. I think Ms. Zilla is going to read the proclamation, and we would ask for consideration and you all to take action to endorse it.
Thank you. Mr. Stratton, I would move approval of the following proclamation, the Great Kindness Challenge Week proclamation. Challenge Week proclamation. Whereas, the Great Kindness Challenge was created and launched in 2011 by Kids for Peace, a global nonprofit based in Carlsbad, California, that has a mission to create peace through youth leadership, community service, global friendships, and thoughtful acts of kindness. And whereas, the Great Kindness Challenge was piloted by three Carlsbad public schools and is now expanded to all 50 states and more than 90 countries, with more than 10 million students participating in more than 15,000 schools worldwide. And whereas, the Great Kindness Challenge is one school week dedicated to students performing acts of kindness to inspire a widespread culture of peace and acceptance. And whereas, the Shawnee Mission School District will encourage families, businesses, and community members to participate in the Great Kindness Challenge Week to increase the impact that kindness can have beyond school walls. And whereas, the Shawnee Mission School District proudly demonstrates its commitment to improve the culture in all schools by encouraging students, teachers, staff, and administrators to practice acts of kindness, both large and small, across the entire population of more than 27,600 students. And whereas, Benninghoven Elementary, the first Shawnee Mission school to participate in the Great Kindness Challenge, is proud to take part for the fourth consecutive year and initiate the first challenge of using words and actions to help and care for others. And whereas, all Shawnee Mission schools are proud to take part in the Great Kindness Challenge, using words and actions to help and care for others. And now, therefore, the Shawnee Mission Board of Education does hereby proclaim, January 22nd through 26th, 2018, as the Great Kindness Challenge Week in all Shawnee Mission schools, where kindness matters this week and every week.
Thank you, Mrs. Zila, for the motion to endorse the Great Kindness Challenge Week proclamation. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Guy, Reverend Guy. All those in favor of endorsing the proclamation, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Seven, oh, endorsing the proclamation. Thank you very much. And thank you for all the work that this district has done, not only today, but throughout the week towards this initiative. I can't wait to hear about the million-plus number being hit. With that, we have another item on the agenda here, and that is for board action, and this is a discussion of the legislative platform. And with that, I'll ask Dr. Atha to come forward as well, who helps us with this process. This document was originally approved late last year, and as we move right into the legislative process, there's a couple additional updates as well. So, with that, I'll turn to Dr. Atha, who's been working on a couple language updates along with some board members.
Right. As you recall, back in November, I asked you to approve the legislative platform so that we could prepare to meet with our legislators in December. And I told you at that time, even if you approved it, it was still a working document that was subject to change and evolve a little bit if necessary. I also knew that we had three new board members coming onboard and that they might want to weigh in on the platform. And so, we have some changes that have come before us and they're minor. And I don't know if, let's see, Mrs. Sinclair, would you like to weigh in on those changes?
I would. Thank you. I just wanted to start first by saying, I really appreciate the legislative, even though I have a couple of minor tweaks, I really do appreciate this platform. And someone who's spent years, is wearing my Kansas PTA hat and working from a set of legislative platform, trying to speak to the needs of an organization, and I really do appreciate the thought and the, that went into this 2018 legislative platform. I'm really proud to support this for our district. The two changes or suggestions that I have for consideration are for the second, in relation to the second position statement that talks about supporting a stable school finance formula. I'd suggest that we insert a little language in there that talks about, that covers the actual costs of providing every student the opportunity to be college and career-ready. And then, continue on in that second position statement regarding financially sustainable, promotes efficiency, accountability, and whatnot. And my rationale for inserting that language is, in, at least in my experience in the last four or five years, there's been some question about what sustainable means. And some legislators might interpret that to mean allocating dollars that, based on what's available at the state, rather than based on what the costs are of investing in our students and providing opportunities for career and college readiness. So, I feel like we can insert some language there to clarify and to dispel some alternative interpretation of sustainability. So, that would be the one. And the second would be a minor edit to the 10th position statement so that the language reads just a little bit more in alignment with the Article 6 of the Constitution. So, making suitable provision for finance of the education of all students. I don't know if the document can be shown. It might be hard to, I guess we all have a copy for the folks here.
Yep. Sorry. We have an amended version in front of us with those items that have been listed. Do any other board members have questions or comments about these two changes that have been discussed? They're both in red. Yes, Reverend Guy?
Just a minor question. Under number two, you say providing every student the opportunity to be college and career-ready. Is it an and/or, or is it?
The state education standards are college and career-ready.
Okay.
I was keeping in line with the state standards.
Okay.
Language.
Okay.
That is definitely consistent with the state. It's not an or, it's an and.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, Mrs. Beck?
And I can affirm that because I was in a lot of conversations where maybe it should just be career-ready, but they say college and career-ready. I have, I have a suggestion that I would like to make, that the word "actual" be struck in line two. I really like the revisions, by the way, before I start. And I would like to strike the word "actual" so it just says that covers the costs of providing every student the opportunity to be college and career-ready. The reason why I would suggest it, and I would love other people's opinions on it, is that there was a time back in the day when LOB was for above and beyond what it would actually cost according to the state, what could be provided by the school district, extras, if you will. Now, we all know that LOB at this time is for bread and butter. So, I think that it, of course, I would like to see a time where that would come back, that all the costs are covered. And if a district would like to do a little bit above and beyond, that they would be able to do that. I'm fearful that if it says just actual costs, that not only would that be not a possibility, but it could also take into account donations, gifts that are given to the district, that those might be subtracted at some point in time. So, Dr. Sinclair, I don't know if you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I appreciate that. I would be comfortable with that, with that change. I'm not sure how much control we're going to have over what gets determined as the costs that go into determining adequacy. I think that's partly what this study will tell us and that will become, I'm assuming, a debatable issue in Topeka. But I support that change.
Absolutely. I think the word "actual" is there is because we've got a recent history of the legislature not providing adequate and equitable funding throughout the state. So, we'd like to at least get it to "actual."
Other questions, comments regarding the proposed changes to the platform that literally we're going to deliver the very next day to our legislators? Seeing done, I'll seek a motion for the amendments to the platform. Would you like to move that?
Yes, I would like to move that. Thank you.
Great. And so, the motion is to amend Items Two and Items 10 as outlined in the draft that you've been provided and striking the word "actual."
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven, oh. Thank you for the information and for the conversation as well.
Thank you.
And thank you. Thank you for the document. This is what we use as our guideline to represent you with our legislators and throughout the state. So, thank you so much for the discussion this evening.
Great. All right. With that, we move on to S1, the Board Financial Report. Dr. Southwick?
Yes. Every month, the board receives the financial report. We've had an opportunity to review that. Russ is here as well as Dr. Atha, if anybody would have a specific question, but that report stands and not.
Do we have any questions? And we're looking at Item S1, the Board Financial Report. And included in that would be the petty cash and the activity funds. I believe we don't have to take action on this. This is just simply an update. Any questions? No. We appreciate all the work. We appreciate all the information you provide us, and we don't have any questions at this time, but thank you very much.
Do you want us to make some up?
I know. I think it would be either one or, you know, five hours of questions.
We don't have to do that. We don't have to do that.
Go line by line.
Thank you.
All right, next month.
With that, we move on to agenda.
Can I say this?
Yes, please.
If there would be an anomaly in the budget?
Yeah.
We would most definitely bring that to you.
Absolutely.
And we would have discussions. So, just so not only new board members know that, but the patrons would know that as well, if there are issues, we will bring those to you.
Great. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to Letter T, Item Number One. This is comments from board members. And first of all, my first comment is, "Thank you for putting up with me as I moved through the first board meeting and I appreciate this opportunity and only look to do as well as," I'm intimidated by the fact that I have three former board presidents sitting at the dais here, so I'll try to do as well as they did. The first item that I'd like to share in my board comments is an update on our process for the superintendent's search. I have before me, it's a summary of the latest steps that we've taken in the superintendent's search. This is actually from a press release that'll go out after this meeting here, but I wanted to share it verbally as well. It's an update, just to share where we are in the process of the superintendent's search. And I'll read from the press release that will mean it's consistent with what goes out today, and that is that the Board of Education met with Ray and Associates, the superintendent's search firm, consulting firm, this past Saturday, January 20th, from 9:00 a.m. till 2:00 p.m. And it took place in closed executive session, again, because it's due to the personnel matter that we're being discussed, i.e. looking at the superintendent's search process. The consultant reported to us that some of these statistics that we thought we'd share, 1,047 individuals from around the country were contacted, and that includes digital and email and phone calls and advertisements, et cetera. So, the net was very wide. Forty-seven states were touched through that communication process and contacting candidates. Of that, 67 candidates applied for the position. Ray and Associates then spent the next month reminding you that December 15th was the cutoff for the deadline or the applications. And so, they gave them about a month where they spent time screening the applicants, and that including doing background checks of each of the applicants. Then, Ray and Associates, our consultants, used the criteria and the priorities that the Shawnee Mission School District community, as well as the Board of Education, identified as being important to this community. And then, the consultants personally contacted and interviewed a select list of these applicants. The thorough investigation of each applicant was made by talking with references, state officials, other state administrators, individuals who knew the candidates as regarding to their abilities and their strengths. Following this step in the screening process, a list of candidates was presented to the board for their consideration in a, I'll call it a first-round conversation on September 20th, this past Saturday. The presented applicants represent a variety of geographic locations and levels of education and administrative experience. The pool of candidates also represents diverse demographic profiles. The list of these presented candidates was thoroughly reviewed and discussed. After a five-hour discussion, a short list of candidates was developed. Now, our consulting firm, Ray and Associates, will arrange personal interviews with these candidates and the Board of Education members over the next several weeks. We'll be doing some interviews. This is the first round. And so, the first round of in-person interviews will be conducted by the board members in executive session. The names of the candidates in the first round will not be released publicly to respect the current employment status of this still rather long list of candidates. It is the intention of the board to complete the first and the second rounds of interviews by the end of February. And it is possible that we may be able to announce if all goes well by the end of March. So, I share that as an update. This is a fast-moving process because here we are at the end of January, and we hope to do a lot of interviews and a lot of conversations over the next two months. But I share that as a formal update from the board because at each of the steps, we want to make sure and share what we're doing in this process so that you're informed on this very important step that all seven of us are embarking on together. With that, I'll turn to other board members for board comments.
Go ahead, Mary.
Okay. Dr. Sinclair?
Go ahead.
Mrs. Zila, please.
Okay. I'm sure we're going to talk about the same thing anyway.
Okay. Well, then, I'll just keep going on.
We have an advocacy day that both Mary and I attended in Topeka. And I just wanted to share one takeaway that I had there, and that was sitting in a meeting about the council that has been formed about mental health, which is a huge and growing issue in our district and across the country, maybe across the world. But Kathy Bush, who is a state Board of Education member, and Representative Russ Jennings were kind of there to present and I think leading the discussion. And their take on that was that they wanted to, you know, not overlap social agencies that are also working on this because schools need help. So, we're not reinventing the wheel 25 times across the state, but trying to work together for the benefit of kids, especially in K-12. So, that was heartening, I think, and I think they've had some good research going on and presentations at their meetings that they've had. They are open meetings, and I am hoping they have two more left. They have one on March 1st and one on May 3rd, all in Topeka. But if you're interested in that, that is a, I think this committee or this council is doing some great things, and we hope to be a part of that.
Thank you, Mrs. Zila. Yes? Dr. Sinclair?
Let me just think here about, look at my notes here about what I want to add to I really appreciated the practical approach that both Representative Jennings and Kathy Bush were bringing to the table to address these issues from, even just thinking about our teachers in Shawnee Mission here. They were even talking about looking at ways to reduce overlap and provide more meaningful professional development to meet those requirements that teachers are required to do at the beginning of every year so that that becomes integrated into the work of this council. So, just from the kind of day-to-day practical implementation of, you know, what our teachers are trying to accomplish. The, let's see. I think we kind of touched on the other issues in the legislative update, that really the action on adequacy is going to take place mid-March, end of March. That's when things are really going to get going, is what we learned in our Advocacy to Action workshop. I guess the only other point of, little bit of local color was that, one of the thoughts from the initial work group on the Gannon response was floated kind of the idea of a constitutional amendment. And I can tell you, the superintendents and school board members in that room had a lot of pushback for the legislative leadership who relayed that as a possible option to the Gannon ruling. It was a good, it was a very informative two days, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Reverend Guy?
Last Tuesday afternoon, Mrs. Goodburn and I had the opportunity to attend a panel hosted by United at Shawnee Mission West Auditorium that focused on issue of poverty in our district, and I found it very eye-opening. We got to hear firsthand experiences from a student in our district and a parent in our district. Poverty is something sometimes people don't associate with Shawnee Mission, but we definitely have poverty in our district, and sometimes it's hidden. Sometimes it's the kids we don't think are struggling or don't have a place to live or are couch surfing or whatever to just try to get by. So, I think that's something I want to continue to have ongoing conversations with others in our district about how we currently are meeting those needs because we're doing a good job of meeting some of those needs, but I think there might be even more that we can do. And so, I'm thankful to all the people who hosted that from United, and it was a great way to start that conversation.
Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Goodburn?
Yes, I had that in my notes, too, that I was going to thank the United team for putting together that presentation. I know Dr. Ziegler and Mrs. Zeke, Linda Zeke, were involved in that, and Liz Minal is one of the members, too. I think she's in the audience tonight. So, I wanted to say thanks for that, and I look forward to more conversations because I think it was really, and I would agree with your sentiments, that hearing from those, the parent as well as the student was very impactful, so, as well as our own administrators that are dealing with that on a day-to-day basis. So, it was very interesting. I also wanted to say I'm the representative, you know, for SMAC, for SMAC PTA. And so, I just wanted to say, you know, we heard the Citizenship Awards tonight, and then next month, we're going to be privileged to see all the Reflections winners here. They do have an event that's going to happen on January 30th. I think a lot of things are happening on on January 30th, as we refer to tonight, but it will be over at West, and they're going to actually display all the building winners, the Reflections, and then also announce the district winners that are going to go on in the competition. So, be looking for that. I can't remember, it was five to seven or six to eight, but it is that evening over at West. So, I wanted to let you all know about that in case you wanted to attend. So, anyway, SMAC is doing great work, and they have had, this month, also, I think, the elementary, the principals, I believe, and their PTA leaderships, they have, they assemble the meetings for those important groups to talk to one another, the leaders, and also, I think they have an elementary one coming up, too. So, for those, so, anyway, they're doing great work, and the Clothing Center continues to, 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 yes. So, anyway, just wanted to give you an, all an update about things that they were doing.
Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Mack?
I have a couple of updates as well. I attended the Shawnee Mission Education Foundation meeting on the 10th of January. I just wanted to bring you an update. First of all, thank you for acknowledging us earlier tonight for the volunteer work that we do. I was struck by how many volunteer hours the foundation puts in. They are right now, they are trying to change their fiscal year to mirror hours, from July 1st to June 30th, and they'll probably get it done by June 2019. But if you could see all the numbers and different funds that they have to deal with, it takes a lot of work. They donated almost a quarter of a million dollars for just program support in Shawnee Mission last year. We did, I received a lot of questions about the superintendent's search from them, and I wanted to mention that their donor recognition dinner, for those people that are in the McKeechen circle or the superintendent's circle, will be February the 7th here at the Bistro. I also wanted to tell you, I did tweet about this. I was at Broken Arrow this morning. Yes, I'm working on it, I changed my handle, but, but I was at Broken Arrow this morning, Mr. Strout was there, and it was kindness rocks at Broken Arrow, and all the students have painted rocks about kindness. And so, if you're in the Broken Arrow vicinity, look for them, because all of the students painted them, and they'll be out in the community. So, I think that's pretty fabulous. And the third thing I wanted to say was, we said last fall that when the new board members would come on, they would be drinking from a fire hose, and they have, and they have stepped up to the challenge, and I, I know everybody welcomes you. I'm, we have a lot going on right now, and you all have really stepped up to the challenge, so I just wanted to compliment you, because it's Board Member Appreciation Month, so I felt like I could say those things.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mrs. Owsley?
I just want to end it with, last Friday, I went to East in the morning, and board members, Reverend Guy and Dr. Sinclair were there, and I really want to start every Friday morning with a pep band. And a drum line. It was really, it was great. I'm really proud of the students at Shawnee Mission East. I think they handled what could have been a difficult situation beautifully. And I, as a Raider, it is hard to say, "Wow, Lancers, you did an awesome job," but you really truly did, and I'm so proud of those kids. And thank you, Principal McKinney, for having us be there so that we could greet everybody and tell them good morning. So, thank you very much.
Yes, Mrs. Zila?
Turn number two here, but I had to end on this fun note, since we kind of had segwayed back to that. I want to just shout out to our district administrators who rocked their shoes at the Rose Hill Geometry Fashion Show. I mean, I saw a whole different side to these people as they were going down the runway, which was fun for them, but the kids were just loving it. So, thank you for going the extra mile there and wearing the shoes that were designed especially for you, Batman slips, et cetera. But it was a wonderful upbeat, and the kids just ate it up like crazy. It was wonderful. And also, at Shawano at the end of the week last week, they had the Golden Globes Award for kids that had shown growth, amazing growth, and, you know, it was, I mean, it was the red carpet, it was the whole thing, and the kids just shone, and you could just see how proud they were. And a whole class that had 100% growth, everybody in the classroom had had growth. That was just so tremendous to witness, and they were so excited, and it was done so well, and with such vigor, and they felt very, very special. And I think, you know, they were all like, "Yeah, I want to be up there." So, what greater incentive to have kids, you know, really want to improve their scores and, and show growth, and it was amazing. So, it was a fun, fun week last week.
Busy. Anyone else? Well, at each meeting, we'd like to recognize those students who are here, either because of just curiosity, or actually some class recognition. I thought it'd be fun to recognize those that stuck it out, but I don't know that I see any. Is there one? There you go. Thank you for sticking it out. Thank you for being here. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you for, whoop, 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 sorry. Mrs. Mack?
Yes, Mr. President. I move we go into executive session to discuss legal matters with our legal counsel pursuant to the exception for matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma. The meeting will begin in the board conference room in 10 minutes, and it will, it will end in one hour, which would be 9:45. Woo, volunteer. No further, no further business will be conducted following the executive session.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Mrs. Zila. All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Now we are adjourned.